Reflect that all board members are present, please stand and join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hey, good evening, everyone. Are there any modifications to the agenda from the board? Seeing none. Going to the president's report, and I had hoped to be able to use this time for us to talk about opportunities that we've had to be in the community or be in schools. I know summer is a little bit slow. I know there have been a couple of opportunities that Dr. Frederick participated in. But any other board members been in the community, at events, or at school functions? I know Denise has been. Do you want me to? Yeah, would you? Get a little bit?
It was my pleasure to attend the summer school graduation at Parkview High School last week, and we had thirty-five summer school graduates. And it was really an amazing event. Lots of family and friends there to see their students graduate. And I thought it was very unique that one of the graduates sang the National Anthem. A young man with a wonderful voice. So it was really a very neat evening and well-attended, and the kids were very proud of their accomplishments, so.
Yeah, Ms. Ritter?
Mine's a little different opportunity. I had the opportunity to visit a couple of elementary schools where they're doing cleaning for summertime. Now, and if you haven't ever done that and seen them stripping the wax off the floor with a scraper and doing this work, and then in the hallways is all the furniture and everything from every room. That's what I told them. And you're sure this will all go back to the right person? Because that was, as they were deep cleaning and doing this in these schools, so it, you know, if, then all of a sudden, I was reminded, when we're having community schools year-round, when are we going to be able to do some of those? So there are other issues associated with those things as we look at them, because they at least have some time where even, and how do they get to the schools where summer school is? Well, they're late, they told me they're later on the list. So I really did, I visited with custodial groups in a couple of the schools. I just stopped by because they were there, and they walked me through some of the things. And so those are things that happen that, and all of a sudden, teachers will come back, and floors will be waxed, and the things will be shiny, and rooms back, I'm sure, the way they are. So that's, I just stopped by a couple when I saw the work grew there.
Great. I think that is work that sometimes goes unnoticed, but certainly is very, very important, so. Okay, just a reminder that we'll hold the board retreat on Thursday, June 11th, starting at three o'clock, July, yeah, sorry, July 11th. We've brought in an amazing facilitator, nationally known. This is Marty Moore. So, is going to help facilitate that so all of the board members can participate. And we are going to have the first portion of the retreat with the cabinet and the administrative team to look at processes. And then we hope to break for dinner, and then really have the last part of the retreat. It will continue to be an open meeting, but it will be focused just on board, board operations, board dynamics, board communication. And so we're going to give our administrative team a break and let them go home for the evening, so.
Three o'clock, four o'clock?
Three. Three, yeah. Yeah. No, 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 Wolf School, sorry.
White River.
The White River, yeah, sorry about that, yeah.
Food? Food.
And then also just reminder to do your plus deltas as the meeting goes on. So with that, Dr. Ritter, do you have a superintendent's report?
I have a couple of things. First of all, as far as summer school, we had four thousand two hundred, four thousand thirty-two students enrolled in summer school. As Dr. Frederick mentioned, the graduation went really well. And we had, we had good attendance and good feedback from students seemed to enjoy it. Of course, artworks is always a popular thing there. Transportation Department did a great job. I think it's called the rodeo, where the bus drivers compete. And we had, we had a driver that finished, took fifth place as a rookie driver. And this is, I believe, is this a, help me, this guy, is this a regional or a state? This is state competition, state competition. And then we had a experienced driver finish third overall. And so congratulations to the two of them. I did not get a name on that, maybe they're too bashful. And then also, I want to congratulate the community relations team and the award that they received. They received the National School Board Public Relations Association Award. It's NSPR, for 2013, it's a Golden Achievement Award. It's a major honor awarded by NSPR in recognition of exemplary public relations. Our communications campaigned Teachers and Classrooms for Kids, which educated our community about the benefits of the 2013 bond and levy initiatives garnered their recognition. So it was all about planning, analysis of data, and execution and communication was the reason they got it. And so congratulations to them and their work. Also, at your table, maybe you don't all have it, but there's a Kids Count Data Center that comes from the Annie Casey Foundation that does an annual study of children across America. And so if you don't have one, I have an extra one. Did you get one, Bruce? Why, we have, and I think a couple of you have, and when you were here, I gave it to you earlier. Anyway, you may want to, as you walk through this, you could see the first page is all about the education rank. And where Missouri has improved and moved up from twenty-fourth to twenty-first in overall performance. And then on the next page, you can see how the, what the state profile was as far as overall look at children. And you can see where Missouri improved, or Missouri went down, or they stayed the same. And then the, of course, the comparison as far as where they ranked are on the attached pages. So it's something to look at, it's a good thing to look at, especially in June, as we're sitting back and analyzing and getting ready for the new school year. You can see that, I think this is very, very important data. Of course, we have always been in Springfield known for abuse. And that is where we ranked the lowest, and that was ninety-second out of one hundred and fifteen. But at least we were not the worst. And these are all by counties. And so it's really a good data piece to look at and really, I think, to consider as we move through. And then, of course, I did not include the national, but you could pull this website up, and they'll give you a picture of what, how things were on a national level as well, as far as treatment of children by particular states. And I think you're going to find that it isn't too surprising when you look at the different attitudes or the way children are taken care of across, across America. Anyway, I wanted to share that with you as well, so hopefully you can gain and learn from that. If anybody in the audience would like a copy, I have extra copies up here later in the meeting. Okay?
I'll just piggyback on that data. A lot of the same data will be reflected in the community report card, which is getting, is at the publishers as we speak. I think they are intending to have that released in conjunction with the Children's Summit that the Junior League and several other organizations put on later this summer, early fall. So a lot of this information that relates to education will, will be a part of that document. Okay, Mrs. Luton, do we have any public speakers for agenda items? Okay, moving on then to information items, Dr. Ritter?
Okay, Dr. Hackenworth, please. Basically, where we're going to be.
Tagged, tagged.
Anybody else?
Is that called passing the buck?
Remember now, we call back to the special ed discussion last meeting, and this is kind of a follow-up to that to kind of give you more information, but also kind of give you the update as far as where title's at, so, Mr. Hubbard.
Oh, up here, okay. There we go. This mine, there it is, okay. Okay, good afternoon. I'm here to talk to you about our Title I funding for this coming year, and projections on after that. I know that you've heard from Amy Krause about the sequestration for SPED. And likewise, we had sequestration for Title I, it's a federal program. And so I wanted to go over the impact on, on this year and going forward. So our allocation, you can see, for 2012-13 was seven point four million. We had a carryover from 2011-12 of a little over eight hundred thousand for an operating budget of eight point two million. And then for our 2013-14, we found out our allocation was this right here, six point nine. So a pretty significant reduction. We expected this. Turns out that sequestration for us was about five, I think it was five point three percent, which is right around where the state was telling us it would be. Of course, the year before, they threatened sequestration in 2012-13, and they thought it was going to be around four percent. And of course, we finally settled on five point three. And then we ended up having around a two hundred thousand dollar reduction on top of that. So with the end of this year, we're expecting a carryover going into next year of one point three million. So we basically planned on have, I mean, that's a, that's a very high carryover for us. We don't normally have that high of a carryover. But we knew with the threat of sequestration that we needed to have a high carryover to go forward. So we end up having an operating budget of about eight point three million for this coming school year. So we're planning on a carryover of approximately seven hundred and fifty thousand a year after. And we'll, we'll kind of talk about that as we go through. I talked about the, the reduction, the first bullet point. And then again, you've heard about the SPED reductions. We're a hundred percent federally funded. We don't have a local side for, for Title I. So everything will be taken care of through the, the federal funds. Sequestration is likely to continue, however, we, we just don't know what the future holds. So we have to be pretty, pretty mindful of that going forward, just like we were this, this last year, going into next year. So we plan to have a fairly high carryover again to offset sequestration for this coming year. Like I mentioned, around seven hundred and fifty thousand is what we're planning on. Although a high carryover is not a long-term solution, eventually it will catch up to us as we continue to have our program. So it'll, it'll likely affect our program if we continue to have sequestration in those yearly cuts. Again, no one knows for sure, but we, we should probably plan for, for that type of situation coming, going forward. And then again, if, if that continues, it will likely impact our program or staffing. It's just a matter of what areas that would impact. I thought this would be a, a good, some good information to have. It's our FTE comparisons by year. You can see in 2011-12, as I think Amy mentioned, that we were coming off of the stimulus. So we had a little higher staffing for two years, and then we had reduction last year. If you remember, I was here talking to you guys about reduction. And then in 2013-14, these are the numbers that I, that I've come up with after discussing the budgets with the principals, getting their input, and talking about what they'd like to have to serve the needs of their building. You can see it's fairly close to last year's numbers, not, not a whole lot of change. But then it's definitely down from 2011-12. You might notice a little bit of a shift in the, in some of the positions. We, we had more math coaches, more principals that were requesting math coaches for the coming year. The reading specialists are about the same, same for the math specialists. Paraprofessionals are a little down. We ended up, if you remember, we had the guidance from the state about mid-year last year on the No Child Left Behind waiver. And so they finally let us release the funds about mid-year. And at that time, it's really difficult to find highly qualified staff. So a lot of the sites chose to put it into professional development or supplies, and some chose to put it into paraprofessionals just for half the year. So that's probably why that, that spiked there a little bit. We have a few delinquent institutions. The wonder years teachers are going to remain about the same. However, if you remember, we went to a co-teaching model. So we're trying to go to more a single teacher in a classroom with a para. So you'll see, we added back a few pairs here for next year. We'll still have a, we might have a wonder years coach. And something that we've been discussing with DESI on, if that's an allowable expense. We'll have a counselor, and then four SAMs for focus schools. If you remember, those are the school administration managers that were, that were going to be providing for the four focus schools. Okay, I mentioned the process of meeting with principals. Of course, we were told from the state that we'd have our, our Title I budget around April. And I know that, I, I knew that wasn't going to happen. It actually happened, I think, right around the last day of school, which is what it seems like it's happened, you know, for the last two, two years. So I let principals know, and I let them know beforehand. I presented them with their current budget and, and said, "We need to really think about your needs. Look at your data, and we'll discuss that." So we had some good discussion before without knowing the budget. And then I came back to them with emails and phone calls after I, after I received the budget. Two title staff are actually in RIF status right now. But the positions were, because they came open for third posting, they had to be put on third posting. And so those two title staff have applied for other title positions. So they may be hired for title staff. So we wouldn't have any RIFs in that case. The staffing process will hopefully conclude within the next few weeks. Third posting closed yesterday, and I got, I got my applicants from HR today, so. That gives you a quick overview. Now, take questions?
Are there any questions, Mr. Hubbard?
Just talking about on the SAMs for focus schools. I think there may be some misunderstanding in the community that the SAMs, that's not something that, as a school district, we decided to do. That is a DESI option for focus schools. I think I, you know, I've had some questions about why is the district doing that? So could you just kind of bring forward again that this is a DESI suggestion, recommendation, or mandate that this is what these four schools need to do? Can you kind of talk about that a little bit?
Sure. Basically, we had the four schools that were identified as focus schools. And with that, they, they normally had school improvement funding before, and then we had the No Child Left Behind waiver. And so once those schools were identified, we had a budget of around eighty thousand split between the four schools. And we were told that we needed to have a three-year plan with the, the funding reduced every year thereafter. We still don't know what that will be. However, we were thinking, what would be a really, you know, a really, what would, what would make a good impact on these sites? And we looked at their data, and really, we kept coming back to the principal as an instructional leader, which is a focus of our district anyway. And at these schools, they, they typically had high discipline rates, they had the attendance issue. So really, we wanted to free up that, that principal. And so we knew of this, the pilot programs that we've already been doing in, in Springfield with some success. However, we've never had an actual FTE that's just dedicated to being a SAM, a school administration manager. It, it is a national program with training that, that comes along with it. And they track the, the data, the time spent by the principal as an instructional leader versus a manager. And so that's really what that SAM is there to do. And it's fully funded by the state with even supplemental funds from what our, our regular title funds are. However, we are supporting it with some title funds going forward just for those positions. Because, you know, it basically took a little bit more, and the funding is going down. So those positions then will be solely based on management, and they'll work in tandem with the principal. But the principal's main focus for the coming few years will be on instructional leadership. So we hope to see, we hope to measure those results, and we'll have really good data. And then we'll, we'll see where that leads after, after that program.
Any other questions, Mr. Ritter?
Just because we know the funding has never been where they said it was going to be, just like special education. But with title funds, we're not mandated to serve these students, not like special education. So I think that's the huge difference, to recognize that. If we're, think we're going to depend on the federal government to fund not only special students with special needs, but low-income needy children with other needs. I mean, your data just shows that we've got a year or two that we might be, but we don't know what's going to happen. But thinking it's going to go up would sure, I don't know who would think that that was going to happen. So I think it's, because we have a number of students, again, little different than special education, that are in schools that are not Title I schools, that have, have the same needs as students in Title I schools. But we're not serving them because we're school-based. And that's what a decision we made as a district. We made that decision that we're going to be school-based. And I don't disagree with that. But I think the important thing is that we only have about, to me, another year or two. And we better pinpoint exactly what's going to serve this type of student the best. Not what we like to do, because sometimes what we like to do doesn't give us the best data on where we want to go. Because I think the school system's going to have to start putting some, when you say it's a hundred percent federally funded, we're going to have to start putting some funds there. And we better make sure that we're funding those things that absolutely work the best, not things we would just like to do. And I, I just think it's, your figures show to me that we may have another year, we may have two years. And at that point in time, a board's going to have to make a decision. Do we continue to fund? And if so, money's going to have to come from the local level. Or are we just going to continue to cut back and cut back and, and not serve those students? I just think we have a little time, but it seems to me it's getting quicker and quicker toward that time when we're going to have to make that decision. And maybe one of the things Title I brings forward is that if you want to serve these students, the board's going to have to supplement this, this funding in some way. I, I just think that's obvious to us. So as we look ahead in the next year or two, we better be focusing on what gives us the biggest bang for the buck and as a district. Because we've got some students out there who currently aren't being served that I think could use some of those, use some of that help.
Any else? Andy? Mr. Hosmer?
You talk a lot about this carryover. And I guess in my mind, it's money that we have and we hold back from spending, and we carry it over to the next year. Is that somewhat accurate description?
That's correct.
So when you say that we can carry over from year to year, but it's not a sustainable, it's not sustainable, I guess, when you're telling me we're going to carry over one point three million dollars, that's one point three million dollars we could have spent.
Correct.
For our needyest kids.
Right, and if, if we had spent it, then we'd be making cuts.
No, I understand, I understand. But, but when you say that, you know, we can, we can do this for a couple of years.
Correct, correct.
It seems to me it's really not that sustainable right now, because we're pulling out one point three million dollars that our needyest kids deserve. And we're not spending it just because we've got to prepare for worse cuts in the future. And again, goes back, I think Ms. Bush said something at the last meeting about sequestration, which is a word that we've all now understand, we didn't understand a couple of years ago. So, you know, these are real negative impacts that kids in Springfield, Missouri are feeling because Congress couldn't get its act together and, and figure this out. So they just willy-nilly decided they're going to just gouge programs. So that's a real impact that comes right down to Springfield public schools. One other question. You said there's a site allocation of four, four point nine million dollars?
Yes.
And, and you said you talked about principals about looking at this. How much of that four, of the site allocation, whatever that is for a school? I'm assuming you're talking Title I schools?
Right.
How much? How much power is within the local school to spend that money, that site allocation? And how much, or is it all just, we're all going to come together and figure out how we're going to spend money, even though it's allocated to the site? Does that make sense?
Right, well, basically, they'll, they usually first put, look at staffing, staffing needs in the building. And then from staffing, then they'll look at professional development materials. But they'll talk to their staff. They have a plan that spells out what they're, what they're purchasing. And again, it has to be supplemental, since Title I is a supplemental program. So it has to be in addition to anything there are.
Well, and I guess my, my question is, is there, are there significant differences between school to school? How that site allocation is spent? Or is it?
Some way, with, with professional development, they're in different places as far as where, you know, where they'd like to go. It's, it's not vast, like differences usually. I mean, it's going to be centered around usually math or reading, or differentiating instruction, using data. The staffing is dictated by Title I, so there are only certain positions that are allowable expenses.
And again, and I've talked about this before, and I, and I do think, I, Mr. Ritter, I think makes a good point, that we, I, as a board member, I haven't been able to see that data showing what that extra Title I money does. I, I know it's going as best as we can spend it. But, but I think Mr. Ritter's right, that, you know, we need it, we need more data on, on what things are working very well. We had, we've had some of that. But, but I'd certainly like to see a lot more of, you know, how this is making an impact and where it's best spent.
Questions? Comments? Thank you.
Thank you.
Dr. Ritter, I guess this is one you can't pass off, huh?
I think I want to get this. I did, there we go. Up here? Well, you're part of the office, you know.
Yeah, I know.
We're really heavily staffed, there's three of us.
Three point four.
Three point four. That's right, you're right, three point four.
Point four hanging around somewhere.
Yeah, we do. That's the review officers and stuff like that. So anyway, I, you see the, by the way, after my ongoing system review during the retreat, it's your turn. Okay? And so anyway, as you can see, the key strengths, key opportunities, next steps. Had a chance to look at those. I do want to highlight a couple, if that's okay. For instance, you will see the, I would like to step up the systems review for cabinet and direct reports. The one that I really want to zero in on is number four, under Key Opportunities for Improvement. And that's increase the percent of students reading on grade level by the end of third grade. And what we're going to do there, we need to define what that means first, okay? And once we define what that means, then I feel we need to report to the board on a regular basis how we're progressing towards, towards that. And, and I think that's going to be kind of a benchmark for us as far as the Early Childhood Initiative and language around early childhood, and then the shifting, hopefully, the, the support. Hopefully, we'll see it as more important to, at the lower level than at the higher level. But anyway, that's the main reason for that. Any questions about that, that piece right there?
Question. It kind of goes back to what Mr. Hosmer was talking about in the, the flexibility that the sites have with Title I money to determine where that goes. You know, if it is a priority of the district to have all children reading on grade level by third grade, it seems like we might not want to, I mean, we might want those Title I resources to go strictly to literacy and not have that flexibility with math. I mean, I don't know, are we able to dictate that?
I believe so. Where's, where's?
I mean, it, it seemed like, when given a choice, more of our principals asked for the math help, which, you know, I mean, I think we just need to have some sort of focused...
When you went, Ms. Moore, she doesn't have her voice with her, by the way.
Oh, sorry.
But anyway, hope, but anyway, that is our focus, across the whole system is literacy, and that's, that's reorganization, you're going to see that, it's really a strong focus on literacy.
Okay, but, okay, then I guess my question is, why would we give principals the option to have math coaches instead of literacy coaches?
Well, that's, that's what I mean, she's just starting, and we're starting to move that way.
Okay.
Now, numeracy supports literacy, so you got to, you know, but the numeracy piece is a literacy-driven initiative. Anyway, now, let me see if I can get this next one. Okay, now, this is the, see, you're a good teacher. Yes, anyway, celebration. Anyway, the, Mr. Renner and I need to go to work on the first one. We only, we've only done one chapter, so we're out of 12, as far as policies are concerned, but that's what that read is, and I'm not, not pointing fingers at you, Mr. Renner. Anyway, but as you can see through here, if there's any questions, let me know, but I'd like to zero in on, because Dr. Frederick pointed out something that I do think I need to clarify, and that is the IMSA V standards towards the bottom. Those are points set by, the criteria is set by the, by DESI, and so those are points, not percentages, okay, percentages. And so when it says graduation rate's 100, that means we received 100% because we had nice growth, as we met the criteria to get 100 points in the graduation rate. And the same can be said for attendance, even though that is pretty close, but attendance, again, we received 95 points out of a possible 100 there, okay? College career readiness is where we, we need some work, as well as subgroup achievement. Okay, any questions about this ongoing systems review?
Board member, are there any questions? Yeah, Mr. Hasmer.
Providing information and gathering feedbacks, is percent of parents attending advisory, 33%. What is that group, and what is that universe? Is that?
Basically what that...
Parents that are on the advisory group?
They, I have an advisory group, a form, a parent-form advisory group, a parent from each of our high school, I mean, each of our schools, and usually at the beginning of the year, I get 100%, but come around, just like parents, and you think about, I mean, Mr. Hasmer, think about yourself here, by, by about April, May, you kind of lose your interest and you're into outside. And so I'm going to need to make some adjustments to where, where it's, being smart around when people want to be there, as opposed to just a traditional time.
I just wondered what the universe was, was, you're just thinking, of the parents that are on the advisory committee?
That's what it is, yes.
Average 33% attendance?
Right, and the numbers go way down after February, March.
Thank you.
Sorry, I should have responded, answered the question. Any others?
Any other questions?
Thank you.
All right, under section seven, this was all action that we took at the June 11th study session, except for 7.05, which is fiscal year 2013-2014 budget. And where are those documents? This is Luton. The new ones.
Under 8.3.
They're in 8.03, they're all down.
Oh, okay, all right, so we'll wait, okay, I see where, all right. Well, we'll just go to 8.01 and get that.
Mr., Mr. Went, please.
Sorry, I didn't see it listed under there.
Good evening, Madam President, members of the board. Dr. Ritter, it's my pleasure to present to you this action item for the Horace Mann roof repair. As you can see, this is, we're using, recommending using the state contract that we've used in the past through the Cooperative School District's contract. It's to replace approximately 8,500 square foot of Horace Mann's roof, including the, putting in new insulation downspouts and the steel fascia. It would be funded by the Major Repair 1314 budget, and it is administration's recommendation that the board issues a contract to weatherproofing technologies using Queen City Roofing here in Springfield in the amount of $147,987.92.
Are there any questions? Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Mrs. Bush, seconded by Dr. Prater, that the board issues a contract to weatherproofing technologies incorporated in the amount of $147,987.92. Go ahead.
Each year in June, the board is, approves the final budget and fund balance transfers as permitted by section 67 of the Missouri State Statutes. Attachment A presents the final projected revenues and expenditures for the fiscal year ending June 30. The amounts presented in this attachment have not been audited, but are based on the district's best estimates using information currently available. Additional revenues and expenditures can be accrued into the year for a period of up to 60 days after June 30. The projections in Attachment A include estimates of these accruals. State statutes require that the actual expenditures not exceed budgeted expenditures in any given fund. Therefore, the proposed expenditure budgets are higher than anticipated to ensure compliance. Attachment B presents the final proposed revenue and expenditure budgets, fund transfers, and ending fund balances for 2012-13. In addition, in order to ensure that there is not a negative balance in the Teachers' Fund, we also do a year-end fund balance transfer from the General Fund to the Teachers' Fund. The final budget for 2012-13 is $303,500,000, and at this time, we ask that the board approve the revision of the 2012-13 expenditure budget of $303,500,000, as presented on Attachment B and the Teachers' Fund and Food Service Transfers as necessary. Questions?
Okay, are there any questions about the final budget and fund transfers?
The attachment A is, is what we really think it's going to be.
Correct.
Attachment B is what we, the final budget.
Right.
Does that make, is that right?
Yes.
So...
We, we would get an audit finding if we were to exceed the budget in any given fund, so we overestimate at year-end.
So our best, our best guess at this particular time is reflected in Attachment A?
Correct.
Any other questions? Is there a motion?
Shall move.
Is there a second?
Second.
The move by Dr. Prater, seconded by Mr. Lee, that the Board of Education approves the revision of the 2012-2013 expenditure budget of $303,500,000, as presented on Attachment B and the Teachers' Fund and Food Service Transfers as necessary. Okay, now this year's budget.
Okay, thank you. This is the budget that has been presented to the board previously, it's been updated for the special ed changes that were presented at the last meeting, and at this time, we ask that the board approve the 2013-14 budget with total expenditures for all funds of $306,943,404, and total revenues of $335,329,975, with an operating reserve reduction of Fund balance transfers necessary to bring the Teachers' Fund balance to zero, and budget transfers not to exceed the approved operating budget.
And just to clarify, that last piece is what we just did, that last phrase, the fund balance transfers necessary to bring the Teachers' Fund to zero, that's what we did for last year's budget?
Right, yes.
Okay, that's, that's helpful to know. Okay, any questions about this proposal?
What, I had a question, and it's more outside, and I don't know how to talk about this without getting into the legislative effort, because in a meeting I had yesterday, and Dr. Ritter had the same thing, we're probably going to have a restriction and a withholding tomorrow for July 1st, because of House Bill 253, and the fair market, then the streamlined internet sales taxes coming down the pike, and if Congress passes that and 253 goes through, we're going to get hit with about $1.2 billion cut this year. Statewide, statewide, no, not us, oh, no. But we got a piece of that, we got a big piece of that. And I don't know what, at least Lyndon Lordring didn't know exactly how much the withhold would be tomorrow, for this time, but it won't be $1.2 billion out of the state, but it could be a portion of that, that we're going, I mean, so we're, we're looking at 10 weeks probably of, at least two and a half months of withhold, or restrictions, whatever you want to call the term, that is going to be done, and I, I mean, just wonderful timing with respect to, to doing this, and I guess I'm a little concerned, I'm not, and I'm not concerned about whether we approve the budgets, and I think we got to do that, but not knowing what it's going to be over the next 10 weeks, and, and if everything works like it's supposed to, we'll be okay, and 253 won't get passed, I mean, the veto won't get overridden, and we don't have to worry about this. But I think they're doing it just out of precautionary measures, and I, and I guess concern, I don't know, concern, how do we respond to that? Do we just hold off some things until September 10th?
We will react. We will react. When the information's provided to us, we will react.
Because we won't know until the 10th, well, we'll know tomorrow how much it might be, or at least by the end of the week.
Thank you.
But I know that, I know there's districts scurrying this week, because everybody's approving their budget this week, and so I, I'm, I'm not just concerned about just us, but all the districts in the state that are now approving budgets this week, and now all of a sudden, a percentage of their funds are gone, are going to be withheld, I mean, I, I mean, we're going to get them back September 10th, they will come back, at least that's what they told me, that they will give it back to us September 11th, if, if it doesn't pass and all that, but it's not like we're going to lose it permanently unless that all passes.
Right.
If it all passes, then we're sort of up a creek.
Right, as soon as we get the initial word...
Yeah, it's not going to just be Springfield, everybody's up a creek.
As soon as we get the initial word, I'm sure Cabinet will meet, will prepare a plan and present that to the board.
Because that's going to be immediate this year, it's not the phased in, it's 1.2 billion this year. So, I don't, I, I just makes me nervous voting on the budget, but I think you have to vote on the budget anyway, and move forward with it, so, but we just need to be cognizant of that, and I know, and I know you are, but I think it's important for the community to know that we're getting ready, even though 253 hasn't happened, we're still getting hit, just because of it.
Are we going to have a discussion after the motion's made on this?
Well, I...
Or you rather, I just have a comment, so I don't, I don't particularly need to make it at this point in time, but I want to make it before the vote.
Yeah, well, yeah, well, you can make it now, if you want.
Well, I, I have concerns with this budget, and, and I've aired these concerns before. One of the big concerns jumps out is the, is what we're doing with special education, and, and the fact that we're not, you know, cutting out the day treatment program, we're making other cuts to that, to that, that spending, all at a time when we are going to end up, projected to end up at a reserve balance of 17%. I was on this board, when I first got on this board, there was discussion at this board table, that we wanted to keep our fund balance above 10%. That's where we wanted to be, and there was discussion that having a fund balance too high was not doing, our kids was not, was not helping them. And so when I see a critical need pulled out of the budget for some of our most, our kids that most at risk, at a time when we have a fund balance of 17% and could easily fund that, that concerns me. I'm also concerned frankly with how much discussion this board has had over the budget. I don't know that we've made one change to this budget, administration has, I don't think the board has made, that I know of, has made a change. That troubles me, but, but again, the, the idea that, you know, we're, that we're going to cut money out just because we got cut from the, from the feds, and again, I understand that, but, but it negatively impacts those students, it was a critical need, we can fund it, and we can fund it with, without impacting significantly our operating fund balance. So for that reason, I'm going to vote, plan to vote against this budget.
It's the motion that I'm concerned about, I think it needs more specificity, and let me read it, and I don't know, Robert's Rules of Orders here, but, so...
You would just move to amend the proposed...
Yeah, move to amend. I've simply added two sentences to the motion. The first one being that the Board of Education approved the 2013-14 budget as presented in attachments A through G of the June 25, 2013 board documents. I think we need to refer to what we're approving, and that is attachment A through G. And at the end, I propose adding these words, provided that no increase in expenditures in any function or fund, and we need to define that, I'll say fund because some folks would rather say fund, will be made without prior board approval, and that comes from the state law. I will say fund, but I think as we move forward, we need to define what fund is, so we know what we're talking about. So those are two sentences I'd like to add, one at the beginning, one at the end.
Is that a motion to amend? Is there a second to that?
There was no motion yet.
I have a motion.
Oh, so, sorry, okay. All right, well, yeah, all right. Is there a motion for the recommendation?
I'll move for that.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, the move by Dr. Prater, seconded by Dr. Frederick, that the Board of Education approved the 2013-2014 budget with total expenditures as listed, with the operating reserve reduction of $2,643,492, fund balance transfers necessary to bring the Teachers' Fund balance to zero, and budget transfers not to exceed the approved operating budget. Okay, and then Mrs. Bush has amended that, and is there a second to Mrs. Bush's amendment?
I second that.
Is there discussion on that amendment?
I, I guess I might ask the question is, is why?
Number one, the original motion simply gives total revenue, total expense, with no reference to any specific document saying where those monies are going. And the last, because it leaves open budget transfers not, not to exceed the approved operating budget, that means total budget, where the state law requires that you can't, you can't increase expenditures in any fund without prior action of the board. It's pretty specific in the state law. So I'm just trying to bring it in compliance. I think it's, it's too general, the first one's too general, and it just needs to be more specific.
Ask Mr. Chotis. We get, we get our regular financial audit every year, and we had a state audit...
And we had a state audit last year. Were any questions raised about our budget and our budget process?
In the state audit, no. You know, as the board's aware, they turned over every stone. Whether they turned over this particular stone, I'm not sure. But our external auditors do specifically review our compliance to Section 67 of the Missouri state statutes regarding the budget. And their opinion is that we are in compliance.
Any other questions about the amendment?
Do they know when we approve the budget, how much of the budget we have in our possession?
I'm not sure I...
Do they know the nature of the budget that we're approving in May, I mean, June?
Yes, they review all board items. In fact, they even review the closed, I believe, too, yes. They even review the closed.
They review all the board minutes and items, including budget.
Right, they review all board.
So they look at the documents that we've received?
Right.
And they say that the motion to say that budget transfers not to exceed the approved operating budget is adequate, control over the budget? I'm just asking.
Well, I mean, they...
Has it ever been a finding in our...
It's not been a finding, right.
Any other questions or discussion about the amendment, Mr. Hosmer?
Is there any negative implication for the administration with if we approve that amendment? Is there something that you would do now that you couldn't do that would negatively impact what the district does?
Well, adding the word not being able to transfer between functions would cause our system to grind to a halt. Fund transfers between funds is less of an issue. In my tenure with the board, and I know prior to that, the board has always viewed the operating funds, Fund 10, 20, and 40 as one fund, even though in actuality they're three different funds. But has always viewed that as that, that's our focus because that's what we have control over. We do not have control over the debt service fund. We don't have control over the bond fund. Those are separate. But these three funds, they've been presented and viewed by the board as one fund. And therefore, the recommendation, budget transfers not to exceed the approved operating budget, provides the authority that's required by the state statute.
Okay, but again, if the word fund was taken out and our function was taken out and substituted for fund, would there be any, what would the negative implications?
We do, we do about, I did some research today. We do about 250 transfers a year between funds. That number, if we were not allowed to do that without receiving board approval prior to the transfer, that number would grow because we have what's called a roll-up, account roll-up within our financial software system. And what that does is it groups multiple accounts together and allows the department, the program, the site to spend money that exceeds a single line item, a single expense account in that group as long as the total budget for those accounts is not exceeded. And what that did is it cut down dramatically on the number of budget transfers we were having to process.
Would, I know you told me this this afternoon, or this morning, but in terms of the 250 transfers between funds, is there, who administratively approves those, first of all?
Well, they are, they're initially requested. There's a form that's completed. That form is sent to the Budget Department for their approval. And then it's sent to our Director of Finance for his approval as well.
And then after that, how does the board get notified of those transfers?
In the, in the Treasurers Report, which we'll be going over next, there is a page that shows revenues and expenditures by object and revenues and expenditures by fund that the board approves each month.
Excuse me, if I could, Madam Chairman. But we haven't approved those objects and funds. We have not approved them, and that's my point. And I would be happy, I will be abstaining, but I would like to discuss this at our retreat. Defining funds and understanding better our legal responsibility when it comes to managing a budget. So I would, I'd be glad to go ahead and I will abstain.
Well, we're going to have to vote on the amendment first. But is there any other discussion on the amendment?
Yes.
Okay, Dr. Prater.
I am very reluctant, when this is something I've heard of for the first time today, to commit us to something that may change the way we do business and the way staff does business without looking at this in depth. I think that the last minute we are here to approve a budget that we probably should have approved two weeks ago. And we're talking about budget process, not a budget. So I will vote against this amendment because I don't understand quite what it totally commits us to.
We'll vote on the amendment first and it will have to be roll call, right? Because it won't be up on the... Okay, we'll start. Mr. Lee?
Nay.
Mrs. Bush?
This is on the amendment.
Uh huh. Nay.
Aye.
Nay.
Nay.
Aye.
What is it?
Four, three.
I said aye.
Aye.
It's four, three.
Four, three, for the amendment?
Again.
No, again, okay, all right. All right, now we'll go to the budget, or the motion that was presented to us. Is there any further discussion on that? Okay, I think we're ready to vote, Mrs. Luton. And that will be online. Right, yep, they give the motion, yep. Okay, it's five, one with one abstention. The motion, or the budget passes. Okay, moving on to Treasurers Report.
If you will please turn to the financial statement. This is the financial statement for May. Even though calendar-wise, May might be the second to the last month of the school year, from a financial perspective, it's, there's really two periods left, not one period left. We still have June, and then we have what, within the financial software system, is called Period 13, which is all our accruals and everything that's essentially after the fact. In looking at the...
When will that come to us? When will that information come to us, the period 13?
When the audit report is presented to you. The May revenue is tracking slightly ahead of last year, 95% to 94%. The expenditures are tracking slightly lower than last year. That's all good news, 77% to 79%. Because we are late enough in the month, I can give the board a little peek at June information. The June property tax is, was about $187,000 compared to, or excuse me, June of prior year was $187,000, June of this year was $211,000. So we got a slight increase there. Sales tax for June was $200,000 lower than June of the prior year. But, you know, nothing major. The numbers are still looking good. And we ask that the board approve the Treasurers Report.
Are there any, excuse me, are there any questions about the Treasurers Report? Is there a motion?
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Lee, seconded by Dr. Prater, that the board approves the Treasurers Report as presented.
Thank you.
Now entertain a motion to approve the routine action items. Okay, Mrs. Bush, is there a second? Okay. It's been moved by Mrs. Bush, seconded by Mr. Lee, that the board approves each of the routine action items as submitted. And then the general consent items. Is there a motion to approve the general consent items? Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Dr. Prater, seconded by Mr. Renner, that the board approves each recommendation submitted by the administration in the general consent items. Information items, that's just reviewing the choice and innovation initiatives that we received. Mrs. Luton, are there any public comments for non-agenda issues? Okay, comments from the board, legislative update.
Kind of did that already.
A little bit, is there anything in addition?
I'll make one editorial comment. There's a whole lot of bantering going on right now with the legislators from a lot of deep-pocket people with respect to how they're going to vote on 253, with basic threats that if they vote and change their vote to not sustain or override the veto, that they'll be run against in the primary. So there's a whole lot of stuff coming from the leadership and from deep pockets in St. Louis. We won't mention names.
IRS.
And, yeah, but, I mean, they're getting a lot of pressure to either hold the fort that way they voted or don't change. And it's really kind of a mess. But, I mean, that's just something we're going to have to be very diligent about with our legislators to either get them to switch. But they're getting hammered hard politically.
What's the timing on this now?
September 10th is the veto session.
So they'll start in the 10th and go until they're finished?
Yeah, and there's a lot of posturing, a lot of it's more long-term. I don't know whether they've got the votes to override the veto yet or not. But it's going to, it's not going away. It's going to continue to come back and come back and come back every year. But just the thing that came up with the fair market tax, just came up last week. They kind of realized that, oh, my goodness, if these two things happen at the same time, based on the language they put in 253 and they reduce the income tax level, it's a $1.2 billion hit this coming year for the state. Mainly because they get a half a percent tax reduction on the upper end of the income tax. Taxpayers can go back three years and get refunds. That's the $1.2 billion hit. If everybody, now, everybody may not do it, I understand that, but they could, so...
Well, I do know that there was discussion, there's been recent discussion about those public entities in the Springfield area that would be impacted by this, you know, higher ed. And I think as September approaches, there'll be a very concerted and vocal effort.
There's a strong coalition that's been put together. It's got about, we got about 35 or 36 different organizations that are pooling their resources to fight this. So there's a good base on it, but still, it's, you don't know.
Will MSBA or you or someone be, you know, I can't, I don't remember how our delegation voted and who needs to be talked to, so...
I can tell you how our delegation...
I think they all voted, they all voted wrong.
Except Charlie Nor.
Except Charlie Nor.
So we have a problem. We have a problem. And that doesn't make me feel comfortable from the standpoint of supporting public education in our state and our community, but...
Could I suggest that we put together a letter to be signed by all the board members explaining? I think part of this, part of this is just ignorance of the impact. You know, we're just seeing some of the impact of sequestration.
You think so?
I think so. Because every one of these people claims to be for public education. And I think setting out, well, setting out exactly what impact this is likely to have on public education maybe tells them that it's difficult to be for public education and for this bill. You know, the other people that supported them in their elections also reside here in Springfield. And hopefully those people are contacting them. I'm concerned that they're not, but, you know, there's a lot more of those people that gave money to these legislators than there are in St. Louis, or St. Louis and Joplin. So, but I hope, I hope that it's a lack of information on what the impact is. But I'd like to have something that would set forth exactly why we're against it. We're not, and we sit on this board. I know probably political persuasions of most of us on this board, and I know that we run the gamut. And so Republican and Democrat and Independent on this board all understand that this is bad for public schools. And so maybe it does some good.
Is that something you'd be willing to draft on our behalf, Mr. Hosmer?
I don't know if you'd want me to.
Well, we could always tame it a little, but I don't think we want to tame it on this one.
MSBA is putting something together.
Oh, they are, well, I...
But I think something from our board, no, not from MSBA, four boards to adopt and send to all of our...
I'd be willing to even support a resolution that we put out publicly.
Yeah, but I think a letter to their home address. Sure, if you want to send me, email that to me, I can...
I think the critical piece here is timing as well. I think we should time that around the first week of August. And I really do, and I know the chamber's going to look at it. And their meeting in August, which will be August 18th, I think it is. And so I think all that needs to happen at the same time.
But if we had one in the hopper, ready to go on that?
Yeah, I think Mr. Hosmer and I could work together and we could get something put together.
That needs to be done.
Yeah, we'll do that.
Good idea.
One of the things that, I think from a standpoint that the rhetoric that's going around too is, some of them are saying, well, we'll let it go through and we'll correct the mistakes down the road. Well, the problem is you can't correct the mistakes because of the Hancock Amendment. Hancock Amendment will not let you correct the mistakes that's in 253. So basically, the rhetoric that's going is, we know there's some mistakes in it, we know there's some flaws. Let's get it going and then we'll correct it later. Well, that's hogwash. You can't correct it later because of that. As opposed to Kansas, which Kansas has now raised their taxes $800 million because of the mix-up they got. They could do that, we can't. We can't do that. So I just think it's important for us as a board, as a community, to be much more aggressive about this one because this is, it's not just bad legisla... it's not just bad legislation, it's horrible legislation.
So we'd have the resolution from MSBA, Mr. Hosmer will draft a letter, and we'll kind of time it to be.
I think also just letting, reiterating all the groups that are across the political spectrum that are firmly against this, and recognize it for what it is, is, boy, if that doesn't, if you can't figure that out, then.
Probably the majority of their voter, of their constituents, not the minority.
It has nothing to do with reality, it's political, pure, simple, dirty politics.
Anything else under future issues?
There is going to be a speaking tour or listening tour going around, headed up by Steve Cookson, who heads up the Education Committee for the House, and I believe Springfield is one of those. I will have the board, give the board a, a schedule and all that, so that we should, you know, we show up, and staff needs to show up at that as well. I'm not quite sure who's on that committee, and.
Do you have any idea when, next month?
It's just starting, they don't even have the schedule yet, but I, I just want to give you a heads up, and then we'll get that out. But I know that's happening this summer and early fall.
July 25th, the chamber's having a, a session on 253 with Jim Moody and Carl Bearden talking about it, so we'll make sure that you guys, ever the board gets a copy of that invitation to show up.
You don't know what time.
It's at 3:30, 3:30 on July 25th.
Thank you, and thank you for staying on top of all that. All right, any other future issues from the board? Anything under other? We did receive the financial and operations report under separate cover, and that details all the different fund accounts and expenditures checks. It's a pretty extensive document, just a reminder to do plus deltas if you have any, and we do need to go into executive session to discuss real estate and personnel matters as provided in Section 610, 021, Sections 2, 3, and 13, RSMO. Is there a motion?
So move.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Moved by Dr. Prater, seconded by Dr. Frederick, that we meet in executive session.